Oh, the other crazy. 안녕하세요. We love music today. Let me check my discord real quick. I think someone sent me a message. Oh, man. The live is on. 안녕하세요. Let me see who this person from. Ah. Hmm 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 hmm. 안녕하세요. Oops, and I don't mean to go on that either. Hello, hello, welcome in. I'm with TikTok doing its thing. For those of you who are new, welcome. Again, there's not gonna be any music because um, I wanna try and upload this on YouTube later and I know how they can be with copyright stuff, so we'll see how it goes. I know, this is gonna be my last Saturday though, cuz I promised I would be on Saturday to people. What was it? What day was that? Thursday? So I'm trying to keep my promise. But it's good to see you. Um, yeah, so the people who had joined Thursday, I promised that I would go over the answers to these questions the last time. Um, so I'm gonna go over that very quickly. So, um, so the answers we had here was 3141. So if someone wouldn't mind just typing 3141 in the chat for me, so that way I can remember when I go to the answer key, that'd be wonderful. Thank you so much for the likes. We're starting early today. 31, yeah, 3141 would be awesome. If someone could type 3141 for me. And I know hopefully the chat is working this time. Hello, welcome, welcome. Actually, hold on. I think if I grab I forgot I had a sticky note here, so 3 1 4 1. Let's go ahead and take a look. So 34, 35, 36, 37. 34, 3, 1, 4, 1. Awesome! So we did that one correctly as well. So I'll go ahead and put 100 on that. Byum. Zik 100. Hello, hi, welcome in. So let's go ahead and get started on a new let me make this smaller. Yeah, that works. A new page for a topic one exam. Um, so with this one, again, the purpose of the following questions is to figure out which one of these best fit the sentences above, right? So either 1, 2, 3, or 4. So once you guys are ready to start 31, maybe you're grabbing your notes, maybe you're grabbing a snack, water, whatever. Just give me, oh, we're not doing thumbs up anymore. Send me an apple on the chat if you guys are ready to do 31. This thing keeps sleeping so fast. I need to change that setting. Alright, I see some apples. Okay, cool. I know some people are probably gonna be a little late, that's okay. Let's go ahead and get started. So 31. oppa? What is oppa? Any guesses on that one? Hello, Luna, welcome in. Thank you guys too for the likes. Older brother for female speaker. Yes. So it is older brother. Yes, it would be from female, girl to an older male, right? Older man, older guy, older boy. Um, so that is oppa. Very good. Let's go ahead and move on to our next part here. Ga. Which is which particle? Again, one of our big three particles. Those of you who are new, feel free to go ahead and give me a follow, especially if you can't today. If you're a newbie or beginner in Korean, and feel free to follow um, or join our discord as well by clicking on the link underneath my name. Hey, Taeye. Thank you guys so much. Okay. Yes, it is the subject particle. Very good. Alright, so one of our subject particles is ga. What is the other one? You haven't been here in a while. I know. Has work been kicking your butt lately? E, that's right. So ga and e. Two particles, okay, for that one. Reichal. Thank you so much for the follow. Alright, so we have the meat of our sentence, which always comes at the end in Korean, our verb. 있습니다. Which is to what? 네. 있습니다. Free shivaka doo, thank you so much for the follow. I was just talking about you earlier today as I was getting groceries. Thank you back up for the follow. I see some to be. Any other guesses about 있습니다? 있습니다? Thank you so much for the likes too. We're almost at 1K. Have, okay, okay, okay. To have, there is, okay. So yes, it is to have, right, slash, exist. Very good. It comes from 있다. Um, for to be, 이다 is to be. So 있다 and 이다. Okay, no question marks, yes. Very good, very good. So together, big brother have, big brother exists. What are we trying to say here? So big brother have. Thank you so much for the likes. 1.2K, early, 11 minutes in. I have a big, Taeye. I have an older brother. I have an older brother. There is a big brother. Okay, so with this being said here, there is a hidden, um, topic, I suppose, here, or hidden subject. And it just might be I. The only reason I bring that up is because ga, we're not saying that older brother here is the topic of our sentence. It's just that you have to use ga when you use um, 있다. You have to use the subject particle in replacement for that object particle we would normally use. So it's saying that we have an older brother. Okay. Any questions on that? It's just a general rule that if you use 있다, you have to use the subject particle normally where you would put the object particle. If everyone's good on that, feel free to send an apple. Um, also too, if you guys are new, feel free to go ahead and give me a follow, especially if you're a newbie or beginner. I'm Korean. If you're anything higher than that, then this could be a refresher for you. Or you could get bored with it. So I apologize for that. Well, sorry, now sorry for that. Uh, but I do, that's the content that I cover as beginner stuff. I see some apples. Apple, apples. Green ones are my favorite. Thank you very much. Do you have a YouTube channel as well? No, I do not. Um, I am working on having one soon. Hopefully after this live, I can work on that. We shall see. Okay, so yes, I have an older brother. So I'm gonna go ahead and erase this since I got some apples from you guys, saying you guys are good to go. Again, if you have any questions during just let me know. I have an older brother or a big brother. However you wanna word that. Alright, let's go ahead and move on to the next part. So 아니. 아니, what is 아니? 시스터. Older sister. Right, it is an older sister. Sorry, it's hard to write sideways. So right, female to an older female. 아니, okay. Alrighty, then the next part. We have a particle here, 도. Which means what? Thank you so much for the likes. Wow, when did we get to 2K? Almost 3. Thank you so much. It helps a lot when you guys share. Also, a secret too, if you just click the share button, just hit copy link. It counts as a share without having to send it to anybody at random, so that would help a lot too if you guys could do that. But yes, it is also slash two. Thank you so much for sharing the live. If you didn't know that before, now you know. Alrighty, so older sister two is what we have so far. Then we're gonna open this up. 있습니다, which again is to what? Oops. Kinda curved it there. That was weird. To what? Thank you so much for the likes and thank you guys for the shares too. Yes, if you just hit copy link multiple times, it counts as a share. To have, yes, to have slash existence. Help boost this live. Thank you so much Vanessa for sharing the live. Hey, hey, Deezy and Rod, thank you for sharing the lives as well. Look at that, already got 50 viewers cuz you guys are sharing the live. So I appreciate it. If you guys are new, feel free to go ahead and give me a follow. Um, I cover beginner Korean content, so if you're a beginner or newbie, this is the place for you. So older sister also have, so what is it that we're saying here as far as our translation then? Thank you Faith, Nichelle. Mangogo, Elina for the share. And the follows. I also have an older sister. Perfect. Okay, cool. Look at you guys, alright. Wow, you guys are quick. How are we almost at 6K likes? Oh my goodness, thank you. Changmin, hello, welcome back. Alright, if you guys are good on this, just send an apple emoji in the chat. Instead of a thumbs up, we're doing apple emojis now. So that way I know I can move on and put the translation, erase all this, put the translation up above. Feel free to take a screenshot whenever doing the live as well for your personal notes. She likes the green apples. I do, you remember. Good to see you again. I know you were here yesterday too. Alrighty, so I'm gonna go ahead and erase. But yeah, feel free to keep sharing the live. 19, thank you. Yes, if you just hit the copy link multiple times, that counts as a share. So I really appreciate that. So I have and, or I also have, I can also say, or put it at the end. An older sister. Anybody have a sister, older sister or brother in here? Any siblings? Thank you so much for the shares. Fiona and Mangogo. At the same time? Yep, okay, we have some older siblings. I do have an older brother. I don't call him oppado. He's not learning Korean, so he wouldn't know even if I told him. Um, I have 3, 3. Oh, you're the nana 아니? Oh, that's cool. Do you enjoy that? Lucky. Oh, man. Alright, so now we're gonna take a look at our answers. Keep sharing the lives and liking the live. Thank you so much. We're almost at 8K, so quickly. So Eden, what is Eden? Eden, Eden. I have four, four. Woo, I bet you're borrowing their clothes and stuff, huh? But yeah, thank you so much for the follow. I appreciate it. Name, that's right, whoops. And then 가족. 가족? Taeye, yes, you got it right. 가족 is family. 가족? And then 생일, woo. Some of you may have heard that word before. Used in a song, hint, hint. Used in a song once a year. I would hope, once a year. Or maybe not for those maybe born during the leap year. That's right, birthday. Jessica, thank you so much for the follow. Thank you guys for the likes as well. I think last time we made it to, was it 35K? Let's see if we can get to 50 this time. You guys are already doing well early since I'm only here for an hour. So let's see if we can get there before the hour comes. 친구? Next one. Star, thank you so much for the follow. Friend, we all know this one. Any K-drama fans in here? You guys are definitely familiar with the 친구? Gabby, thank you so much for, when did we get to 31 shares? Me, 100%. What are you guys watching these days? What K-drama are you watching? I heard of one, something island recently. Somebody was like, yeah, that one's really good. Ah, not King Island or King of Island or some, something. Island King, I don't know. King the, okay, good. I was like, uh. Someone said it was really good, so I might check it out. I think, is Yuna in that one from Girls' Generation, I think? Is that the one? Um, I love her, so I'll watch anything with her in it for sure. Yeah, she's in that, yes. Love her, love her. She was in the first K-drama I ever watched, um, You Are My Destiny, back in 2007 was my first K-drama ever, so love her. Alrighty, so based on our answers down below, for those of you who are still with me, thank you. We're almost to 10K likes as well. So I have an older brother. I also have an older sister, so based on the sentences above, are we talking about name, family, birthday, or friends? 1, 2, 3, or 4? What is the theme of our discussion here? 2, 2, family, 2. Very good. Thank you guys for participating as well. I appreciate that too. All the shares, all the likes, you're up to 33 shares. 2, 2, it looks like a lot of us are going with 2, okay. So I'll go ahead and highlight that, whoops. It's definitely the eraser, okay. So we're going with 2. Any questions about this so far? If not, go ahead and send apple emojis. Lina, thank you so much for sharing the live. Those of you who are new, yes, if you just click the share button and hit copy link, counts as a share. Feel free to go ahead and follow as well before you go, if you have to go. Um, so that way you can join my lives Monday through Friday at the same time. Thank you so mu- You guys are just like the best support system, for real. Birthday two weeks before, but the day of it doesn't exist. Oh. I cannot, yeah, my memory is kinda horrible too. Hi, Siwa. Okay, alright, let's go. Me, thank you so much for sharing the live. Hello to those of you who are just joining. Alright, 32, 타는, favorite one. One of the first words you learn after you get off the hunger stage. What is tall? Oh, I saw it's 타는 two, and then I missed it. I'm sorry. I, okay, very good. I, that I slash me, right? And again, for those of you who are new, is this formal or informal? Formal or informal? Formal. Very nice with the quickness, some of you. There's also something I forgot to mention earlier when it came to this during the last live, and I'll probably forget again, but if I remember, I'll mention it later. Okay. Next one, Moni, thank you so much for the follow. 는, which particle is this? And I feel like I'm gonna get a mixture of answers. But it's okay. Olivia, am I early? Yeah, pretty much. We're like 25 minutes in, about halfway. Topic, topic, wow. Wow, look at you guys. Did not see one that said subjects. If you were thinking that, it's okay too. Don't worry. People get them confused all the time. But yeah, the first topic particle we have, cuz there's two, is 는. What is the other one? We learning, yeah, I see you guys are learning, and I'm very proud of you all. Oh my gosh, she's so supportive. I love her. I love you guys too. We gotta be supportive of each other, you know? 은. Very good, okay. Alright, look. Y'all got this. I'm gonna just leave this test here. You guys can go ahead and do it yourself. No, I'm kidding. It's just that you guys are so smart. Yes, very, very proud. Ooh, okay, I'm trying to make sure I don't get too much of this. I'm trying to see, okay. Alright, so 회사원? What is 회사원? I know it's not dealing with money. Thank you so much for the shares, the likes, the follows, the, the love, the apples. Yes, yes, yes. Apple, so yummy. Company, employee, company, office worker, hmm, workplace, okay. We have a mix, we have a mix, and that's okay. Office. Oh, safe travels. Oh, yes. I may have missed something, but if someone has to go, take care, be safe, hopefully you can join the next live. Already at 11K, are we gonna make it 250? The world may never know. Alright, so 회사원, let's go over to neighbor dictionary then. Since we had a mix of answers, and again, that is okay. All we gotta do is just look up the word together. And hopefully, I'm trying to do this without, there we go. Okay, employee, staff, or workforce. There you go. When is it? The next live is gonna be Monday at 9:00 PM EST, so I do have my schedule underneath my profile picture. Um, so if you click on that, if you're like having to forget next time, it is on there, Monday through Friday at 9:00. So employee. So yeah, office worker is fine, employee. Oops. Oh, what in the world? Employee. Office worker, etc. Okay. Alrighty, let's go ahead and move on, since we're moving on so quickly. Cuz everyone here is super smart and super supportive. 입니다, which is to what? To be, to be or not to be, right? Shakespeare said. That is the question. It comes from 이다. Which is the verb that we're using here. Any questions on this so far? If not, go ahead and drop an apple. And then we'll talk about translating the sentence together. I do like green apples. Thank you for the green apples. Red is good too. I like red apples. I love them both. I love apples. Thank you so much. Apple pie, thank you, Taeye. Stepping up, you know, upgrade. Ah, 회사원? 회사 원? You're welcome. Oh, thank you so much, Taeye. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Jacob, for the follows. I feel like we get many, I feel like many get the, yeah, topic marker confused. Cuz we're told the sentences are as, yeah, hmm hmm. So it, when it comes to the topic marker, yes. Um, it is normally attached to the subject of the sentence. But we're talking about, right, the actual marker itself, not what it's attached to. So yeah, there's a little, I know when people like teach Korean on videos, depending on who you watch, whether it's Talk to Me Korean, Korean 아니, Billy Go, whatever, they all teach something a little bit different. And therefore it can get a little confusing sometimes, so it's okay. Not to you guys' fault, I promise. Southern Moon, thank you so much for the follow. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and erase this. Feel free to take a screenshot while I do that for your personal notes, and then I'm gonna put the translation up above. Now, before we move on, I do have a question for you all. Again, those of you who are new, or maybe can't say, feel free to give me a follow before you go. So you can join the next live. Um, I am or office worker? More detailed? Can you say? This is the question now. You guys listening? Thank you so much for the share as well, 48 cheers. Can we say 나는 회사원입니다? Is that acceptable? Yes or no? Hello, nobody? Can we say 나는 회사원입니다? I say yes, I say no, I say yes, I say no. I say yes, I say no, I say yes, I say no. So. For those of you who said, no, no, it's kinda like, maybe like, you guys are like, yes, but this, um. The answer is no. You cannot use na with imnida. It's a big no. Why? Because like you guys mentioned before. Ta is formal, formal goes with formal endings. Formal goes with formal endings. Okay? Now, if you wanted to make it informal. You can put na, so you can say na-nun, of course, that's, that's acceptable. But you would not use imnida. You would use a different ending, which would be what? Conjugated. So Hae Sa Won i-da is not a conjugation, cause you still have the da there? That's the dictionary form, right? I guess correct. Good, good, thank you so much for the likes. Okay, so it would be. Because iya is the informal way to say ita. Informal with informal. Formal with formal, polite with formal. Why not iya, i, oh, i-eo? Because this is polite. And because it's polite, we would use the formal. This is not informal. This is the polite form. This is the honorific slash formal form. Showing respect. Anything that's informal, we want to use informal. Um, subject. In order to stay polite, we have to use the formal. Okay? Now, if you have an older brother or sister, and you wanna say na-nun, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. That would be okay, if they say it's okay. I don't wanna confuse anybody too much. You know, you can ask your brother and sister for permission to talk to them like that. But if you're wanting to talk to strangers and things like that. Keep it within its family, keep formal with polite, informal and informal in its place, okay? This, this is more common if you wanna make a good first impression with somebody. Keep, keep everything in its place, okay? Don't go too outside the box, alright? So very good, I'm glad I covered that, and the reason I did is because the people in my Discord, when I used to give out homework. Um, when they would write their own sentences, they would mix na-nun and then the yo form together. And I had to keep telling them, no, you can't do that, so. Unless you wanna slap in the face, okay? Alright, moving on. When is it okay to make na-nun na in text form? I see it a lot with texts, you know how you shorthand text messages sometimes? I'll see, put, people put nan for na-nun. Um, sometimes you'll see it in lyrics, like in music as well. Just shorten, shorthand, that's all. Okay. Car. Automobile, alright. A different one? I know this is gonna bother some people, so let me fix that. Thank you so much for liking the, oh, sixteen, okay, we might not get to fifty. But we're pretty, pretty close to twenty before the end of the live, before we hit our first hour company. Last time people were like, challenge accepted. Alright, and then eh, which particle is eh? Oh wow, okay, yeah, y'all are slamming it. You guys are awesome. And thank you so much for the follow, location. A location, and sometimes it can be time, like if you're trying to say at seven PM, right, or something like that. So it can be that as well, but we know it's attached to a place, so it must be location, right? Location particle. Very good. Thank you guys so much for the follow. I see the names, I just am afraid to say them, cause I'm afraid I'mma butcher them. Your cup of tey, I love it, BTS fan? Question mark? I know there's no question marks allowed, but just asking. Alright, and then lastly. Which is to what? Been for six years. Oh wow, now that you bring it up, yeah, I started liking women twenty. Fifty? My first comeback was Run. By BTS, that was my first comeback video, so. Yes. Just to. Three, we haven't even gone over the answers yet. Panida, we have one for attend, any other guesses? If you gotta use the dictionary, that's okay too. Don't feel like you're cheating. Those of you who are new, feel free to go ahead and give me a follow, if you're coming back. Maybe you looped through all the lives, and you're like, all of them are boring, I'm gonna go back and see Sutel, then welcome back. Sammy, thank you so much for the follow. Gabby, thank you for sharing the live. Um, Fancy Letter, thank you so much for the follow. To bring, to go bring? I'm unsure, okay, I appreciate that, yeah, if you guys don't know, you can say that in the chat as well. Ah, hope you're enjoying it, if it's your first live, I appreciate you being here. So like today, I just, oh, you just got home from work? I mean, you don't have to answer, not trying to be in your business. So what's the word we had here? No, I don't wanna speak into this, come on, okay? If you didn't know this one, feel free to write it in your vocabulary memory bank. So go continuously, drop in attend commute, so we've had this word before, actually, in one of the other topic pages, I remember. Um, so to commute. To commute to work. Or ten, is that one of them? Or did someone say that? Yeah. Yes, from last time, yep. Commute in the car, right? Commute by car. Naver, I think, yeah, the app, Naver Dictionary, uh-huh. That is the name of the app. Or you can use Papago. A birthday party? Which is funny, we just had the word birthday too. Earlier, oh, right here. Alright, so car, company, so location parto can, location particle can mean. What? Like what would be, what would the word be? In this case? Yes, Papago is amazing, I love it. And it uses Naver Dictionary too, like when you type in the sentence, the definitions at the bottom are from Naver, so. Cam, Jin, thank you so much for the follow. The company car? Right. Uh-huh, commute to company? So based on our sentence here, what could it be possibly saying? And I low-key kinda wanna use Papago for this, so yeah, you guys make your guesses. And then, since we're on the topic of Papago, and I'm sure a lot of you would like to know. Okay, what apps can I use to help me with like translation and like finding words? I can show you how to use it with this sentence. It does. Thank you so much for the follows, guys. You may have to go, so I appreciate you guys being here. How did we get to twenty-two? We might make it to thirty again. Before it hits that hour, ten o'clock. I work at a car company, okay? I commute to work with the company car, okay? Oh yeah, that app is good as well, I actually know the person who, um, made it. I commute to work by car, I use the company car to commute. Okay, get in the mix. And I can understand it, especially without having some type of. Particle right here. It's a little confusing as to what's like, what the sentence is trying to tell us, right? Yeah, very good, okay? Let's go ahead and use our handy-dandy Papago, just to see what it says. I'm doing this without looking up at the top, so I'm like, I hope it's correcting me, if I'm typing something in, oh. I work for an automobile company. Whoa. Or I probably commute to. An automobile company. Hey, someone said that, I'm guessing it was, um. Aster. Mm-hmm, makes sense, right? And this, again, this is Papago, for those of you who are like, not familiar with it, so. As you can see, it's pretty useful in clarifying things, and again, down at the bottom. It gives you a breakdown of each of the words as well. So it's pretty cool. Car plus company, yep. Very nice, very, very nice. So I commute to a car company, everyone good on this? Feel free to take a screenshot. Once you're good, just drop an apple in the chat, eat briefly Papago. Those of you who are new, feel free to give me a follow before you go, so that way you can join the next live I have on Monday. Green apples. Yes, yes, yes. Apple, so yummy. Apple, so yummy. Thank you so much. Thank you guys for liking, sharing the live, yes, yes, yes. Thank you for liking and sharing the live, appreciate it. No, please. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and erase. Thank you for the apples. Yes, yes, yes. I don't know Japanese. How to know when it's pronouncing G and not K? On which part? Do you see a word? If so, let me know. Alright, let's take a look at our answers, ooh, we've had this one before. I think just, oh, just in general, okay? Just in general, so. That'd be a tough one to, um, so. I'm like, is there word? So if it's at the bottom, it makes more of a K sound. If it's in the middle, like. Na, oop. Naga, which is like, go, go, I hear it. Uh, it makes more of a G sound, if it's in the middle, if it's at the beginning, like. It makes A's like KG sound. Little bit more in the K, just because it's at the beginning. So KKG. Hopefully that helps. Yes, Hae Sa. Habbi. It does flow, flows pretty well. Okay, Changso? Changso? Thank you so much for all the likes. Looks like we're gonna hit thirty K. We can try that. Place, right, I think it was like place or venue. I know we've looked this one up before. To my. To my. Sarah, thank you so much for liking the live, M, Gabby, you guys are working your fingers to the bone, Lena, Sana. I wish I could help you out. Yumi, thank you so much for the follow. I don't know any of these, that's okay, add them to your flashcards, or wherever you keep your vocab list. Quizlet. Anki, yeah, the Anki deck. Weekend. You guys, you're back, girlie. Thank you so much. Hi, Ticap. Even with this one at the bottom, the makes a P sound. Cause of bottom. And Ticap, just because this gets moved up here, it makes more of a G sound. Job. Job, occupation. Alright. The only one I knew, that's okay. Alright, so thirty-two, I'm an employee slash office worker, I commute to a car company. Are we talking about one hobby, two place? Three, two my, weekend, or four, job, Ticap? One, two, three, or four? My chemi coders. Oh yeah, also too, my Discord is open, the link should be working, if not, let me know if you wanna join. Talk more about that, I guess, towards the end. So a lot of us are saying four, 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 four. Number three, my lord. Love it, Luna. Alright, so it looks like we're going, woo. Going with four. Thank you for doing the lives, this really helps me study the basics again, trying. Oh, what I'm talking, nice. I'm happy, please help, that makes me feel good. Chewy, thank you so much for the follow. Alright. We'll say, is this our last one? It is. Once you guys are ready to go, just send an apple in the chat and we'll move on to thirty-three. Our last one. Um, if we, well, we'll see. See apple, does he have apples? We'll give you guys some more time to reach the thirty K. Alright, see some apples, we're good. Again, if you happen to have questions later on about something, um, just let me know. I appreciate you guys with the shares, with the copy links. Appreciate the likes and the follows all day today. Alright. It's like, we're good, wow. Okay, Hangul, okay. Hangul? Let's start there. Hangul? Have a Discord notification, I'll check that out later. Korea. Oh yeah, very good. Alright. First particle of the day, eh? Which particle is this? Emma, thank you so much for the follow. Bubble City Works, thank you so much for the follow. Guess you guys might have to leave us, it's okay. See you next live. Location. Could be at, could be in. Et cetera. Alrighty. Then. You guys have been doing so well. Which particle is this? Yes, yes, I love to see it, yes. Oh, I'm about to cry, oh. You guys are growing up. Okay. Thank you Hope for the follow. Topic particle, and of course, you know, I gotta ask. What's the other one? There's two. How do you? That's right. That's right. Proud, proud of you all. Y'all can go to Korea now? All by yourself, okay. Ooh. Learn from the best. Crying over here. Spring, spring it is. Very good. Uh, bear, that's gom. That's the only reason why I know. Kids' songs will teach you a lot, that's all I can say. Okay. That song, yeah. Almost at thirty K, yes, I see it. I see it. Summer. Kids' songs and kids' books, yes, will help you with vocab. A hundred percent. If you don't lose interest quick, like with people who get bored easily, kid stuff might not be your thing. But it's okay. Next one, kar. Ty, you'll be fine, you'll be fine in Korea. As long as you know Haejangsir bathroom, you'll be okay. Fall, autumn. Makes me miss somebody. We'll talk about it. Okay. So, Kyul. Kyul. Winter, kids' book recommendations. I can't think of any, any off the top of my head. I know there's um, a lot on Amazon. If you want like a physical copy, and I know there's some apps you can get kids' books on, but I can't think of them off the top of my head. Hopefully someone might be able to answer you in the chat. Which subject? Wow, I said this. I'll give it to you. Subject particle. I helped out on that one. What is this, to what? We've covered this in one of our previous um questions. Yeah, yeah. To take your time. Ta do? To, I see mix, to have slash exist. Um, to be, ida. To be. So those of you who speak Spanish, um, tener versus ser. Tener versus ser. Be good on that. Thank you so much for the follow. Thanks for the follow, guys. You really are a miracle. And thanks for the Spanish one, I love it, you're very welcome, Sarah. Tener. Okay. So, Hanguk eun bom yeoreum gal yeol i issumni da. Hanguk eun bom yeoreum gal yeol i is issumni da. Letters and characters? What do you mean? So yeah, looking at it all together. Okay, yes, translations, cool. Um, there is Korea has. It's breaking some, okay? In Korea, there's spring, summer, fall, winter, okay, there is. Okay, I don't wanna read or write. It's, what do you wanna do with it? Oh, you just wanna speak? Yeah, I just wanna learn how to speak, forget the other stuff. Every day, Monday, one, okay. I like, if that's what you wanna do, you do you. And nobody judge you. There's some people who just wanna read and listen and not speak, I mean, that's fine too. Um, so yeah, so Korea. In Korea. So, let's put this at the bottom, since I made a mess up at the top. As for, that's our nun part. As for, dot, dot, dot. In Korea. Comma. There is, is? Spring. Summer. Fall. Winter. E is subject, yes, and nun is the topic, very good. Cherry, thank you so much for following. Thank you guys so much. You made it to thirty K, I missed it. And it's already five minutes past ten. Very good, if you guys are good in this, feel free to send a apple, an apple. Um, I was gonna say something else. And I forgot. But yeah, just drop an apple. If you guys are good to go, we'll move on to the next part. You're learning. I love it. Yeah, I'm on my PC, so I'm just gonna put green apple, you know what I'm saying? Thank you so much. I'm just leaving this here, I feel like this will be very helpful for some people, especially the tener and ser. Alright, let's move on to our next part, since we're almost done. So, chigum, we'll start with chigum. What is chigum? Now, right now. Now. Am I right? Is that right? My Spanish is a little rusty, would you know? Yes, si, okay. Is which particle? I was about to say a little, ya ora? I heard can be a little as well. I'm not sure, it just depends on where you're from. Or it can be like used in multiple ways. Topic Chris, saying it with your chest, thank you so much for that. It is the topic marker particle. Very good, proud of you guys. Getting a hundreds on these particles so far. Kar, okay. Which season is kar? Again, otra vez. Fall. And lastly, just to trip y'all up, they added in ni da, which is to what? Let me zoom out, which is to what? I'm not. To be, very good, yes. That one doesn't talk, this is good. Ser or no ser? Very good. To be. Or not to be. That is always the question. Oh, tokum, yeah, tokum, little. This one? Tokum. So you're not ora, oh, ora can mean later, not a little. Is that what you were saying earlier? I know some people know ora to be like, oh, like a little later versus like now. That's what I thought you meant. Tokum, yes. Christian, thank you so much for the follow. Aorita, yes. That. Thanks, I miss Spanish. Yes, to be. So to be, meaning I am, it is, right? You are. It is, so what is our sentence telling us? In a little bit, okay. Some people will like, I would hear them be like, yeah, they mean like right now, but I guess like in a little bit. Makes sense too. But some people's a little bit can be like three hours later. Aorita means right now too, okay, like that. Okay, now, currently it is fall. It's currently fall, now it is fall. Misambo, thank you so much for the follow. Seon, thank you so much for the follow. It's fall now, all those are good. So we'll go with it's fall now since that's the last one I saw. It's fall now. Everyone good on that? Send an apple if you're good. Almost to thirty-five K like last time. So excited, thank you so much for the support and sent, sending those shares. Extremely helpful, if you wanna continue to do that, that's great too. Hit that copy link button. Thank you for the green apple. Is it Malia? Green apple. I don't know why, when I saw that, I thought like that's how it sounded, like, green apple. Have you ever taken the, I have, it's been a while though. I wanna say the last time, it's at a level five? But I can't remember. Sandra, thank you so much for sharing the life. Adios, thanks for joining, I know we're a little over time. Okay, yes, Malia, okay. Like, I'm trying to get good at these names, okay. Like, I'm trying to get good at these names. Okay, so our first one. 겟할. 겟할, which is what? I only study until level two, really? Definitely getting a little sleepy today. Uh, let's check the chat, season. Season, seasons. Um, next one, 나라. So this is an example again, cuz someone asked yesterday, I think, about when this makes the R sound. This is another good example. Someone had squished like a sandwich between other letters. In the middle like this, that makes an R sound. Country. Very good. Ah, okay, gotcha. You've been like. Immersed in it, the language, but you don't know like. How to explain, like the grammar, actually, yeah, I get what you're saying. Hello, have you taken topic? I have not yet. Too scared, I'm a wimp. I was gonna go to Atlanta to take it like. Two years ago? But never signed up. Yeah, 씨당, market. And lastly, 휴이? What is your studying sign? Um, I think Sagittarius, I wanna say. I was born December nineteenth. Holiday, holiday, yeah, holiday vacation. Vacation. How would I rate my Korean? On a scale? One, yeah, my Korean is definitely one, for sure. Oh, y'all are trying to answer, yeah, what? What best goes with the sentence above? Are we talking about seasons, country, market, or holiday? My bad, my bad. Yeah, my Korean is horrible. 한국, yes. We're all going with one. Yeah, if you guys are new, feel free to go ahead and give me a follow if you're a newbie or beginner in Korean, cuz that's what I cover. Alright, seasons. We're talking about seasons, we're talking about winter, summer, fall, all that good stuff, right? Let's go with one, oh, wow, using the eraser as a highlighter. Okay. Very good, so we won't cover the answers now cuz we actually have a couple more pages to go through. Um, but we'll stop there. Okay, I know we said we're gonna do this the next time I came on, of course, but we're a little over time right now. So maybe we can do that the next time I go live on Monday, okay? Ryland, you made it towards the end, I'm sorry. If your Korean is horrible, my speaking ability isn't even. Stop, your Korean is probably better than mine, in all aspects. I will say when it comes to Korean, I suck at listening, but that's with any language, like, I took Spanish for a while, suck. I get so nervous when people listen to me that everything I learned just goes out the window, like, when I speak to them. When I'm like listening to them, I'm like. Don't look at me, but like if someone's talking to somebody else, like if there's a conversation going on in the distance, and I'm not a part of it. I can tell you like, a good, roughly a good idea of what the topic is. But the moment you start talking to me, I'm like, what'd you say? They can start sounding like alien, for real, for real. Where is this she from? Topic guy dot com. It's free. Yes, I only do this for beginners. But it's like my specialty, I like, or the content that I cover. Um, if you're higher than that, then of course this is a good refresher for you, but I only go up, yeah, to like A2 level. So yeah. I just came to speak. How are your thumbs? From last time. Thirty-five K, we made it, almost thirty-six. And I did that. Yeah, speaking is not, speaking and listening are my weaknesses, reading and writing, I'm a little bit better with. But vocabulary gets me every time, like, that's why I can only pick up context clues. As to what someone's saying, I can't. Guess what's being said like verbatim, like, don't be like, hey, this person said this, what does that mean? I'm be like, they're talking about. Um, world domination, cuz that's the only word I. So ask me word for word what they said, like. Hunter vocab is, I won't even talk, I got the Hunter book. Um, do I still have it? I may have gotten rid of it, I don't remember. But anyway, any questions about, um, what we've covered so far? About when the lives are gonna be? Anything like that before I go. Is your Discord open? It should be. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. So this is my Discord. Did I miss it? Someone's asking if they missed live. Hopefully you're in here, but yeah, it's open, this is the last person who's joined so far, but if you click under my name. Go to the link underneath my page. So this is my page, if you click on that, takes you here, the link is here. Click on that. Says, open anyway. And the Discord's right there. I don't know if I can make it any easier than that, but that's all you have to do. Okay. Try it, if it works. Great, if not, I probably have to replace the link, see. Oh, it's invalid, okay. Ah, man, let me go ahead and fix it. The link is. Should be underneath my name. So right there, underneath the timeframe for my lives. It should say chemi code. Let me fix this link situation. Also too, if you haven't verified your email. For your Discord account, be sure to do that, for security purposes, or. My Discord cannot be open to you. Cuz it sees you as an intruder. So be sure to verify your account first, okay? Alright, I'm redoing the link. Since it seems to expire like every two days. Okay, it should be done, it should work. Let's take a look. Thank you so much for the follow. Alright, so you get chemi code card, let's see, open anyway. Gonna click Discord. And it says, accept invite. Well now, what I do is gonna say you're already a member or something like that, I think, yeah, it's just gonna. Take me to the Discord. Oh, Taehyung, thank you for making an invite as well. You don't see it. No, there you go, ah, I see you guys, so it's working. Go live in more times, I know nine PM EST for this one. So yeah, Monday through Friday, you probably already saw it, um, back on here. So I have it listed under my picture, as to when I go live, so M through F is Monday through Friday, and then yes, nine PM EST. So you would have to, you know, convert this into your time zone. But I'll be going live Monday through Friday, so during the week. And only help out beginner learners, so keep that in mind. It confuses you? No problem. Actually, when you join my Discord, I have a channel that says tutorial. And I linked some videos in there about Discord basics from YouTube. So hopefully that'll help you too. Oh, you had to open it on a browser, okay. Interesting. More 칭구, yes. Aw, thank you. I'll finally be in, really? Hello, welcome, I see you. Very nice, very yes, yes, and don't feel, don't forget to, um. Put in your introduction. Also, be sure, in order to see the rest of these channels here, you have to go to roles. And then scroll up to the top and click, become a chemi student in order to see the rest. If you don't do that, you'll probably only see these channels right here. And I think on the welcome, yeah, so above your name. It tells you what to do, says to get the chemi student role, you gotta go here. So once you click that, you just scroll up and it'll take you there. Alrighty. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Be sure to grab some roles too, let us know what pronouns you use, let us know what level you're in by using the chart here. So you just follow through it to see if you're a newbie, beginner, high beginner for the Discord. And there's also some other roles, letting us know where you're from. Uh, neurodivergent is a new one. So. If you're part of the neurodivergent crew, click on that. Aw, thank you so much. Yes, please bring your personality here, we need more people. I think there's only like, yeah, two hundred right now, so share it with your friends, things like that, have them join. My goal is to get to like a thousand one day, we shall see. I had six hundred, I think, at one point, but. Yeah. I, some rules have changed, so hopefully we'll get more people. Can you pause? Okay. I can't chat, make sure you get the chemi student role. So go to roles and hit the. Button right here, the security thing might be on if you can't chat yet. Um, so if you grab this role already, and you go to the general channel, which is right here. And I'll just say. I'm not used to typing on this big thing. 안녕. Forty! It might take a couple minutes, the security thing might not let you say anything right away. Hi, new peeps, Taehyung is here. I see me, is this you? Hello, see you look. Hey, Malia. Very good, yes. That's you, I guess you guys could just see yourself alive. Okay, cool, yeah, Discord link will be up there, I'll keep trying to remind myself to like refresh the link every now and then, since it expires every so often. But it will be there, it'll always be linked in there. Right here. There's also other things that you can join as well, as you guys saw, my Instagram's on there. I have a stand store for digital products, um, my TikTok is linked, but you guys are already there. And then, of course, if you wanna show your support, I have Venmo, but. That's what's there so far. Very good. 안녕. Hello, I can't send stickers, but I'll send a little cute, like. Froggy, I love this frog. And this fox. That's you, so you're able, yes, you're able to start typing, wonderful. I can't switch this, I can't see, oh. Hello. So we'll let you join the link. So if it won't let you join, be sure to go to your account thing right here. And check under your. Account, or maybe your profile or privacy, one of those, to see if your thing has been verified, it might be account. Um, click on that one, and it may tell you like you need to verify your, through your email or something. Got the app now, how do I find you? So. Gonna go to my TikTok, click my profile picture right here with the forty K likes, click on that. Go to the link under my name. It says chemico dot card dot co. Hit open anyway. And then there's a blue button that says Discord with a little Discord icon, click on that. And the link, that is the link to the Discord. So you just hit, accept invite, and it'll take you to my Discord. I'm happy you guys are there too, so that way you can get notified of stuff, make friends. Study buddies, talk about the live together after leaving. Oh, Taehyung put a link in the, I don't know if you can copy and paste. Way up above, I think she had, um, commented on it. Taehyung, if you're still here, if you can send that again, that'd be cool. Let me see what gifts I have. Hello. Little high fox, make it a little bigger. Thank you. You're welcome, if that doesn't work, I don't know. I don't know what to do, I don't know why you can't see the link under my name, that's very weird. Yeah, just keep trying, 슈아, it'd be nice to have you. If you guys want to mess with Taehyung, just send her XO gifts. Okay. Google Chrome, okay. So yeah, maybe it's the browser you're using, if you're using like. The regular internet or like Safari or something on your phone, then yeah, it might not work. I'll be happy. Alright, guys. The link, you're in! Woo-hoo, where are you? Yeah, ooh, some cute faces, hello. Loving these icons. Oh, this one's cute. Okay. Again too, make sure you go to roles channel and grab the chemi student role. So you can see the rest of the channel and start chatting with people, okay? General channel's gonna be your main one, just to like, get to know people, chat it up about random stuff. Other ones are open, if you have like Korean questions. You put them in here, and then we answer them through a thread. So that way you can get more in-depth answers. Okay. Maya, thank you for the follow. I can't join. What's going on? 한국말 배우는 서버 맞죠? 네, 맞아요. Maybe more 공부하는 서버? 한국 공부하는. Alright, guys. More people. Hello, hello. Alrighty, so I'm gonna go ahead and sign off cuz it's getting a little late. And I'm always supposed to be on till ten. So I will see you guys on Monday, hopefully. And I PM EST, that's the next time I'll be on. My phone is also on four percent summer. Just head out. But you guys take care. 잘 자요. 좋은 하루 보내세요. Bye-bye. Yeah, that'd be awesome.